Let's call the meeting ordered, November 10th, 2021. We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all. Town administrator, weekly update?
All right. The first two items are thank you letters for donations that were received. The first one is the Red Cross. On behalf of the American Red Cross, thank you for your generous gift of $500. The next one is for the Center for Wildlife, thanking the town for their $100 donation. The code enforcement officer has finished another certification. This one he completed was a commercial ventilation certification. So he's down to just a couple of left. There was a minor crash on H Road on a set of guardrails across from the campground, right Will? The Sheriff's Department did do a report. We've sent it over to our insurance company. Will went over and took some pictures of it. It is going to need to be, we're going to have to put a claim in for it. So Maine Municipal handle that. Will is working with the guardrail company to get us some quotes and work on getting it replaced.
Is that the one we just fixed? Yep.
Yes.
That's what it's there for, right?
It did its job, as Will said, yep. I got an email from the fire chief, just letting us know that, just an update on the tanker, the tanker truck that the townspeople approved. They're still waiting on a chassis. They've moved the delivery date. They've pushed them back to February. So apparently there is a shortage and they are working on it. Should have seen an email from the treasurer by now, saying that the audit was done. Electronic versions are in your email and also online. Spoke to the window company today that's replacing all the windows. The manufacturer has told them they can be picked up the first week of December. So he will be scheduling installation of those right afterwards. Lions Club came in and made a $200 donation for the Christmas lighting for the rec. So that money went directly to them. So they'll be sponsoring that. So that was helpful. Just feel like I'm all over the place with these things. Someone lost a level, big level, not just a little level, a big, big level. I don't want to say too much more about it. Somewhere up near Milton Mills Road at the very top end of the road. So it could be somebody from New Hampshire. But if anybody's missing a level out of your truck, I've got it in my office. If you could identify it, it is yours. What's that? I can't. I just hear the background, okay? So we have that level. Next is an email that we got from the fire chief, another email indicating that Main Care came out and did an inspection. And near Main Care provider, which is the town, Main Care has conducted their site visit per federal requirements. And the site is in order and complies with everything. So this essentially allows us to continue to get Main Care payments. So that was good news. We are doing our annual Neighbors Helping Neighbors Thanksgiving basket. So we have a list of items if people want to donate. And I also have, I believe, a couple of spots left. So if you know somebody that you think might could benefit from a basket, let me know. It is all confidential. Robert Gore has notified me and he and Mary Stanton will be holding a candidate's night on December 6th. I've told him that after the deadline of the nomination papers, which is Friday, we would send him a list of the names and the phone numbers so that they can organize it and they would take it from there. Just a reminder that the office is closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. We will be open on Friday and Saturday. As you recall, yesterday we closed early because we had a motor vehicle fall training class. I won't bore you with all of the details. A couple of things that may be of interest to you is that legislation passed the temporary plates that they give for vehicles from 14 days to 30 days. They alleged, not chuckling. They passed a law that allows motor vehicles to pull vanity plates. Apparently there is a lot of complaints on certain vanity plates and what they mean or what they intend to mean. So they've made an emergency act to allow them to pull them. So if you get a naughty letter in the mail from motor vehicles, they're replacing your plates. And the last one is they've made it a law for disabled vets to be exempt from excise tax. In the fine town of Acton, you are already exempt as a disabled vet if you're being paid at 100%. But they've now made it statewide, so. Mike Corey, the director of APAT, has put together a job posting for the videographers. He's looking for people that might want to learn how to videotape the meetings. It's a flat stipend rate, so anybody interested can reach out to him or I. And the last thing that I have to tell you is bittersweet, comes with congratulations, but also very sorry to see. I was notified by the York County Sheriff's Department that Greg Sevigny has been promoted to sergeant. And as exciting as that is for Greg, he's a great guy and he's done well by us. He is sergeant and he will no longer be our contract deputy. They are still working on the timelines. This isn't happening overnight, but he did accept the promotion. I actually spoke to Sheriff King today and we will again be part of the interview process and the procedure for the replacement of Greg. But certainly we wish him well on his next step. That's all I have for this week.
Want bills?
All signed.
Okay, approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 3rd, 2021.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, department head, committee chair updates?
Mary Grant.
Good evening. Dave Creep, it's from the Mary Grant Nature Committee. We had a somewhat busy year this year. Started out as a town meeting, as you all know. We made a ton of money there to go towards painting our barn. Had a yard sale to raise some funds for that. After that, we did our pumpkin drive-through if you notice here. Open next year, we can go back to the regular gardening event. But the real reason I'm here is we actually got our barn painted last weekend. It came very quick. We had a whole bunch of people lined up to paint it. They said we're going to be there Saturday. So they came last Saturday. They painted the barn for us. I was sure I was there along with at least four of my other committee members to make sure they had coffee and food and everything they needed to keep them going. But the barn painting is not just an effort of the people that did the painting. It's an effort of the town because the town contributed to that in a great, a great way financially and nothing else. So I would like to publicly ask the Chair of the Mary Grant Committee to thank the citizens of the towns of Acton for contributing to the Mary Grant Committee in any way that they did.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot. Any other department head? Me, yes? Okay, I guess we'll move down to old business, Article 43 request.
So the Article 43 request application that we had pending before us was the Lakeside Drive. The road committee did meet last evening and Mr. Jay Ward is here to give you their recommendation.
Thank you. So we went through all of the documentation. It almost would be in order. We did a site visit or some did a site visit and it looks to be in order. And we can speak to recommend encouragement with that.
How much?
It was 26...
26, 2680? When you said it was unanimous?
Yes.
All right, so it's unanimous. They have all their paperwork. Everything they need's been checked out?
Correct.
All right. Well, we should make...
They're complete. They're proposed at it.
Yeah, I think we've appropriated funds to them before, right? And everything was...
So do we make a, just a motion to accept?
Yeah, you guys got an email to you back in October as well. So I'm sure you've had a chance to review it by now. Any questions for Jay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll make a motion to accept the Lakeside Drive Article 43 funds for 2680?
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
All right, great.
Salt bids.
Well, this turned out to be an interesting project. Because what I didn't know, and I'm not sure if my road guys knew this, but what I didn't know is that Eastern bought out Granite. Did you guys know that? So Eastern, Eastern Salt, the company that continues to bid in the cog, actually bought out Granite State. And I didn't realize that. And they're kind of, so that actually happened three years ago. I found out today. And I kind of found out inadvertently because I called Granite to get the price. And they sent me over something on Eastern Salt's letterhead. And I thought, well, that was weird. How did I, how did I reach out to these people? Because Eastern is a low bidder on the cog. So anyways, made some phone calls, made a new friend named Jason. And he eventually told me that that's what's happened. So this is where we're at. We're going to need to put it off for another week because Eastern/Granite is offering us $68.23 a ton. The cog winning bid, however, through Eastern is $58. So it's the same company. So what I said to Jason is I said, well, so we're going to get the $58, right? We're part of Southern Maine Planning Commission. He said, well, Acton is listed here, but the amount of tonnage that you needed wasn't sent back. So I spoke to Mary Ann Alexander, who handles everything through Southern Maine. She said she would take care of it and to put it off a week. We were part of the cog and she expected we'll get that $58 bid. If for some reason you didn't, Morton is at 63.55, which is still $5 cheaper than Granite/Eastern. But we're going to ask for a week to kind of sort it out between the two companies and see if we can get it down to the 58.
58, yeah.
But now that they're all bought out, I'm not sure who else, what other companies there are.
Pretty much they bought out the competition, so we're going to be stuck with the cog.
Yeah, and there was, there was like four companies that consolidated together. So to be continued on the salt. You guys are good for now, right?
Okay, we'll go down to new business, ATV club request.
We just wanted to take a second to introduce ourselves as how New Fields has established an ATV club. Since you guys know we're neighbors, a lot of you are. We have a town ordinance that we put in place requesting access. We've got a couple of the roads through town. So that we can make our trail system connect, modern, young, and future into New Fields.
Can you just talk a little closer to the mic? They're having trouble hearing you. I'm sorry. Get right up there.
You can pull it out to you if you want.
So we have a town ordinance feedback to submit to you guys for review. Requesting use of a couple of your roads in town so that we can connect some of our trail system that neighbors you guys that runs through New Fields as well as into Shattuck. So we have a couple copies of that for you guys. The request, any changes that you guys have, this is pretty much what our neighborhood towns are currently using. Water or whatnot. It seems to be working. Nobody seems to have any big issues or add-ons.
So this is an ordinance other towns have already got?
Correct, yes. Other towns have already approved this and neighboring towns. We've just taken it, inherited it and added in the roads that were requested from you guys. So we have copies of that for you guys. For us to move forward with access, we need to also submit our request to the state. But we can't do that. We're looking for blessing of the town first. So it needs, I guess, a letter of recommendation from you guys is what we're looking for. If everybody could come and contribute to the town, which we're proposing.
Can we take a look at, do you have copies? Can we take a look at what you have? So you, when you say ordinance, that's something, the other towns have voted on it at town meetings. It's an ordinance, so.
It's been proposed at a public hearing for the townspeople to...
Thank you. And what you guys are doing, looking for permission to go down town ways?
Yes, that's another town ways.
Page two.
Page two.
How we're going to respect the use of the roadway. Obviously, we're going to be posting the accessways, speed limits to the accessway. And all areas needed signage needed for proper use and respectful use of the road as well as the neighboring privately owned properties and whatnot.
So pretty much kind of like what you do over like Darren Ridge Road over there and now Waterboro, where you got speed limit signs for the four-wheelers. Stuff like that?
So our town meeting is in June. We're actually just working on timelines for budgets, warrant articles, that stuff generally happens. Deadlines are generally around January, January, February. But the town meeting itself isn't until June. So if the board supported moving it forward, it wouldn't, a vote wouldn't happen until then.
Okay, absolutely. This was, like I said, something we had drawn up that is completely open for change. So if you're just saying that you guys need to do the fight to the requests you have, just fit the town in particular. If it was a little bit of time, it's definitely...
Right now, the state law says that a four-wheeler can't go on a trail without having permission from the landowners, correct?
Correct.
And that's why they need this, so you can go down the short section of the road to get to the...
Short sections of the road and then we are connected by the old landowner. What we're working on establishing up through New Fields is really we're working focusing our energy. But the way a couple of our access roads, these sections are active, are going to need to be used.
So you're talking probably up towards the end of the H Road?
Yeah. I'm sure it's a little complicated exactly what it is for.
Yeah, so it's a big group of law enforcement. Basically, Landowner Audit, which is a big establishment clause in parts of the area, they can't connect to us to get fuel, any handy or whatever it's like police. So we're using basically all roads that people leave anyways, old town roads. We want basically both the buildings to, we're starting a little bit small, just trying to do one straight trail. Buildings to, you know, get access to landowners, people can ride from one place to another. And then we want to expand off of that. So the biggest thing that we're trying to figure out, you know, we want to back them as interested in that. Most of the roads technically we could avoid active if we really had to. But obviously, we're exactly what we want to get to also. People have to be inactive. So we want to see what kind of interest that people had, suggestions, stuff like that. We listed some roads in there that, you know, we had one road that, you know, we can get the food like Williams, which we have trails that are very close to that. You know, we can get the Hebo Highbow with access from Front Pedro to, you know, down. Basically, a couple of roads will connect. It's a huge...
The Hebo Highbow. You're trying to get to the Hebo Highbow then? That's what you're trying to do?
If that's a possibility, we can.
Well, I see, I see Sanborn Road and Nason, yeah.
Yeah, so we just proposed a couple different things?
We have a couple of routes and what we're looking for kind of gives us an A and a B option. As well as, he said, a couple of, we're just reaching out, trying to get to a couple of points within town. To bring some revenue to town, so we're looking to look for restaurants.
And then we can, you know, obviously, we did something established. We can break up some of that eventually if we need to or change some of those.
Cool. I'll look into it.
So I was going to recommend with the board's approval, so if, we are at a two-member board right now. We're going to have a special election on December 14th. But if we put it on agenda, on an agenda maybe after that election, to give you guys a chance to review it and whoever our new selectman is, and then by then it would be closer to budget slash warrant season and they can decide if they want to move it forward. So if you want to check with me after the 14th election, I'll tell you which agenda we'll put it on. We'll give our new person a chance to review it and we'll get you back in front of them.
Ross, I appreciate you.
Sound good?
Thank you both.
Okay, transfer station exit letters.
All right, so with the two recent layoffs at the transfer station, these are letters created from the treasurer. These are for more unemployment reasons. We're required to give an exit letter just saying what the last day is, rate of pay, benefits or payout. So you don't need to read the letters out loud. They're just exit letters. Yeah. Just sign them. Make a motion to sign them. You're welcome to say the names, just...
So we just want to make a motion to sign...
Exit letters from the transfer station.
Sign the exit letters from the transfer station. All right, I'll give you one.
I don't, do I have to, I shouldn't have to...
No.
Person's name?
I don't, I mean, it's...
I'll make a motion that we sign the exit letters for the transfer station.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
You don't see these often because these are layoffs, so the difference, the terminations are when people resign their positions.
Okay, we got a freedom of information request.
All right, so just an update. We are just about done with the Buzzell Road. I appreciate the people that watched the tape and reached out and kind of helped me with some information. I think that we've been able to get most of the information to the individual. One of the last emails was requesting the length of the road Adam was in today. And we worked on, or he worked with the CEO on measuring that. So we need to send that information over to the individual. So I think that will be wrapped up. I did get another one from Mr. Donahue under main freedom of information. I'm formally requesting the full amount that the town has spent on lawyer fees for the fiscal year 2020 to specify from town meeting 2020 to town meeting 2021. That's something that takes a matter of seconds. So we did send that off to him already. The total was $10,630. Keeping in mind that that's your Chandonay appeal, your Gilia appeal. There's a lot more than just regular calls and he...
He didn't specify.
He didn't specify, so it's all legal payouts to Burke and Clegg, Lankowski, Ken Maris, and Burgen and Parkinson, who, so that's been sent off.
All right.
Okay, we're down to appointment.
I have a question. You mentioned the Buzzell Road?
Oh, excuse me.
I live on the Buzzell Road and I didn't know that you were considering the land for the Buzzell Road.
We have public comment in just a minute and then you can come up and talk, okay? Thank you.
Where are the appointments?
So Mr. Donahue would like to be appointed to the road committee. He reached out and he had some interest in the, in that committee. So he asked that I move his name forward. So that's the appointment, should you choose to sign it.
Well, I can, I'll read a certificate of appointment, Title 30A, MRSA 2602, Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine 2, Jeffrey Donahue. The Selectman of the Municipality of Acton, do it in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as road committee member within and for the municipality of Acton until 6/30/24, given under our hand this 10th day of November, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all righty.
All in favor?
All right, sign away. You sign first, right there, and then I'll go beside you. Now, public comment.
So we are now public comment.
You want to come up?
Not really, but I will. Well, you can come with me, Randy. I don't care. We all, we all have our own, well, you guys didn't notice when the people are not there.
No, we've talked before about it.
Yeah, we've talked before.
So just a little history before you get too far. So we, I don't know if you've been following along with the meeting. So we have, when we get a freedom of information, it's, somebody reaches out wanting particular information. So we've had an individual asking for, you know, like the acceptance of when Buzzell Road was accepted by town meeting, when it got discontinued, you know, what the length of it is. Okay, so I mean, I can pull the information that I forwarded to him. I don't have it in front of me. I didn't know you'd be here. But I believe it was 1893 is the town meeting warrant that we found where a portion of Buzzell Road was adopted by town meeting. There, it's not clear in reading it, and certainly we haven't taken the time to research it. There is, it specifies in the article from a starting point and an ending point. And back in 1893, they reference that as, as individuals' homes. So I, you know, I don't know where, I believe it's J.K. Buzzell lived in 1893. But that's where the, the portion stopped that they accepted. So we'd have to do further research to figure out where this individual stopped, you know what I mean?
This has been done numerous times and we'll no doubt come up with the same conclusion.
So that the Y at the top, is that?
Yeah, there's all foundation there.
Yeah.
But the people of, so it's, was that Lakeside Drive? Is that Friends of Lakeside? Is that what that?
It was, yep.
I think it was Friends of Lakeside. We haven't heard from them at all. And the individual that's brought this, this issue up, lives across the other side of town, has brought this issue up and we're going to hash into it again. And, but I don't know, we're, yeah, we're going to run around on this one, I guess.
So we sent that, we've, he's, we've offered him to come in. We have a folder that's five, probably a good five inches thick of different Buzzell Road documents that have been, you know, derived over the years, correspondence between legal and different selectmen, information from road committees, you know. But that was one of the direct questions they wanted, that and the length, which I have written down in my office.
The only part of the road that's close is that two tenths of a mile.
At the very end?
Yeah, from the Y to the tar. And that's just two tenths of a mile. I already know how long it is. I mentioned it under John.
So where are you talking about?
The Buzzell Road, the end of the Buzzell Road.
That's not...
Oh, yeah.
And you go down there and there's a little bit of tar. And then after the tar stops, I don't, I don't know if they plowed that end where the tar was. Or where the tar stops is two tenths of a mile till another will stretch the tar.
Yeah.
And that's the only part of the road that's not that, right in front of me.
That doesn't have anything to do with whether or not it was a town road or not. The private road tarred that themselves.
But they used to take care of it.
Yeah, when we took...
The lady that we bought the house from said the town always took care of it.
Okay, we did up till...
And then when I bought the house, they wouldn't let me buy the house unless I signed off on their...
Road association?
Yeah. And I couldn't buy the house if we didn't sign off. They didn't tell me this until the day of closing.
Yeah, well, that's your relatives' fault. But the problem is that, and I, I used to plow that road for the town of Acton. I did.
Why, why did they stop?
Because state law told, what was that, 90, 90s? It was 2006 anyways. We stopped maintaining roads that we considered private roads.
But it's not, it's a division.
But ma'am, the road was accepted in 18, what?
93.
1893.
All these roads were at one time.
Okay, a lot of them, a lot of them were. But the problem is that road starts at Youngs Ridge Road and stops at the old farm, which we all figure is at the end where the Y is. From there on, that was the old Swan subdivision that was created in what?
60s, 70s?
Something like that, okay? That was created beyond that point. That road didn't exist when that road was accepted in 1890 something, okay? Because they added on to it afterwards, doesn't mean your road was... So what happened was there was a lot of roads in the town of Acton. They got plowed, sanded, graded, that weren't town roads. And then when the state come down on us, said you cannot spend public funds on private roads, our road committee and this and that looked into what roads and they, and that's why they stopped taking care of it.
So did the state tell me whether that's a...
This has been, this has been hashed out for years and we've come up with the same conclusion every year. Except one person will say, oh, no, it's at the bottom of the hill. It's here, it's here. It's not at the end, but it's here. We determined at that point in time, well, the road committee at that point in time, that was at, at the Y. It was just, I don't know, I think it's like 70 feet down all around the corner there, right where the... The pavement had been added on to. The pavement that's added on there, that was added on because back when they paved Buzzell Road back in the day, they just continued on because we plowed that.
But they plowed, they paved the road right beside Buzzell Road?
That, that's Langley Shores and that turns a private at the end of it.
It's private?
Okay, you go down Langley Shores, it's two roads.
Yeah.
You got Langley Shores and then you got the private part of Langley Shores. The part that was paved is, you know, town maintained. Then you got the Langley Shores that's not.
So that was put in before 18 whatever?
That was the same idea back in the day. So, I mean, we can dig in. We've exhausted this over the years and years. But if somebody could come and show me...
Well, who I talked to, the state that could tell me?
The state, the state, we tried that. The state doesn't give us anything.
It's a matter of interpreting, interpreting, no, no.
State transportation or what?
Yeah.
It's a matter of interpreting the town records. And that's really what it comes down to, is that if you, somebody, and what he's saying has happened is that you've got to go through all the town records to decide what the townspeople voted and what they didn't. They're... Nope, they're here. And that's where we found the 1893 acceptance. And you're welcome to come in and take a look at that.
Is there anything in Yawk County registration leads down at, at the registration office?
I don't know what, I don't know what they have. But I mean, you're welcome, you're welcome to come in and look at the town meeting warrant. You'll see where in 1893 where they accepted a portion of it. And then what you're going to do is keep going through the town records to see if they ever accepted the portion that you're referencing. Because if you look at the 1893 vote, it clearly says, let's say, from point A to point B. Maybe from 1893, somewhere else, they accepted another piece. We haven't, I haven't personally found it. They say it's not there.
This is, this has been researched over and over. We had, we had a road committee that put a lot of time when Mr. Gannon was on.
We're only asking for two tenths of a mile.
What would they do to bring it before the town? What would they have to do to bring it before the town to get voted on?
To bring it up to standards. Standards.
And if it's been paved, is it already up to standards?
No.
No.
But, you know...
All these roads that are built, some private citizens... All these roads that are built, some private citizens have to build road up to standard to get you guys to take care of them.
It has to be, it has to be, it has to be up to standard.
Or we don't get the state to do it.
The state's not building it.
No, they don't build roads.
They're town roads.
And how did all these roads get here? Private citizens built them?
No, the towns built these roads, I mean, yeah, there's a section of Samborn Road that was built by the state, but, but no, these roads were built by the towns here, you know, back in the day.
Yeah, and how come they can't build one road?
Tell her specifically how she would need to go about getting her road built up.
You would have to get on the warrant, and I don't believe we could, we, I don't believe we can vote on building her road, it would have to be brought up to a standard.
So, they would do it as private individuals?
It would have to, and I explained that to you, that last time I talked to you, that we can't...
I don't think that's fair.
It's like me, I'm putting a road in so that my children can build homes, I have to make sure that road's up to town specs, and then they'll come, they'll, they'll look at it, and they'll either say yes or no.
You're doing like a subdivision.
Well, no.
You live on a subdivision, that's what you live on, the Swan subdivision's pretty much what you live on, that's what it was back in the day.
I don't fly vehicles, huh?
Do you, you know what I'm talking about?
I would love to have somebody tell me why.
Go ahead, Ben, you're not.
Because the road didn't get out any farther, right? I mean, it stopped.
First off, drawing over here, that maybe can't be next to it, I wear a mask because I have an immune system.
It's okay, that's fine.
You're, you can watch it all you want.
Sir, you're welcome to wear it.
That's fine.
On Buzzell Road, I actually measured where the pavement stops, and went down that hill to where that next pavement starts, it's just under a half mile. The road where it's not tarred is the exact same width all the way through there as the tar part, it has a crown in the middle, and yet we keep getting towed, it's not good.
What, what, does that have anything to do with whether or not it's a town road or not?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, is how can we get this small section of road put back to Buzzell and have that private taken off the sign?
I explain to...
It's hard to tell at night, because people that come into the camps, they see private, they can't touch it, they come down through that dirt section 30, 35 miles an hour, all summer, there's three of us that eat dust, you can't keep your house clean, you can't keep your yard clean.
There are a lot of dirt roads in the town of Acton.
Yeah.
And, you suck the dust, it's speeding, you can't do anything about it.
So, you'd like to...
I was hoping the ATV guys wouldn't leave, because I was going to ask them to mention to their members if they're using that in the Buzzell Road, so...
I think, let's stay, let's stay on track on one subject here.
If it was paved, that's one.
For the road, wouldn't he go downstairs?
So, we, we, when I, when I, when I, I can't remember her name, but I spoke to her last time, and I explained that what I would do is, there is a road association there, and...
Yeah, they're useless.
Okay.
They take $300 a year away from us, they promise to take care of the roads, they don't touch our ass.
Well, that's, that's really nothing that we can...
And we've complained about it a lot.
But we can't...
There's nothing we can do about it.
Unless the road, unless the road is brought up to standard, it gets on the, on, at the town meeting, and it's voted on by the town, we can't do anything with that section of road. That section of road, the only reason that's not paved from the end of the town right away to where it is paved is because your, your road association got a grant, and they, I think that was the DEP and all kinds, 319 or something like that, but they paved that through a grant, and of course, with the monies that they got. I would suggest going to your road association meetings and pressing to get the rest of it done, if that's what you guys need to do, but we can't do that, we just can't, we just can't go in there and pave that road because you have dust, because we'd have every camp road in the town of Acton complaining about dust.
It's like the last meeting they had, I asked them to put salt down, salt gets in the road, keep the dust down.
Calcium?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have the money, I said...
That's, that's nothing to us, I mean, that's...
That's why we're trying to find out how...
I explained to the lady that just left there that...
I couldn't really...
You've got to build that road up to standard, and we know that that part of the road, there's a section of that road, they put a bunch of gravel on it, but there was a soft spot there, you'd have to redo the culverts, make sure the road's got base, it's quite a project.
You'd, you'd go down, you would go down to the code of...
Go down the road with us to show us what needs to be done.
Codes, I mean, wouldn't we, a road commissioner, wouldn't take downs?
So, we have a, we have an ordinance, a road ordinance, that specifies the steps that it has to take before it can go to town meeting to be voted on, and if I'm correct, one of the steps in there say that the road commissioner has to approve it, so maybe, you know, he can help you look at the, look at the ordinance as far as the steps.
Okay.
I mean, doesn't it say it in there that the road commissioner has to approve it, gentlemen?
Yes.
It does, so, maybe one of the two of them, and I think they split that road, right? Summer and winter?
There you go.
So, maybe they can both help you with it.
So, I have to get a hold of the road commissioner?
Yep, and your, two of them are right there, so I think that maybe after the meeting?
And ask one of them...
But you're also going to make sure that, you know, there's a right, you know, you've got to get your right of ways, your setbacks surveyed, everything, it's a quite a project.
But it's doable.
Well, it's doable, yep, and that's why, you know, it'd be beneficial if your road association would work with you on that.
Yeah.
I would think that your road association would love to have that as a town road, I would think.
I would think.
So, but until...
Start with the road commissioners, look at the ordinance online, we can print off a copy for you, or it's online, you know, talk to them, let them look at you, look at it, and kind of give you an idea of how much would have to happen, and, I mean, it's a start.
Yeah, we bought our place, we bought the land, and we were nowhere...
You bought it knowing it was a private road?
Well, we weren't thought it was a private road, I had always driven down, and I saw a sign that said, "For Sale." We were two days out of living in, out of our vehicle, or in a tent, we had to do something, we bought property, found out afterwards that this is a true private road, there's a, the road association came and knocked on my door and said, "You know, you have to pay us money every year," I said, "What the hell are you?"
Well, that's, unfortunately, your realtor should have let you in on that before you bought that property, and typically, you know, I tell people, there's green signs and blue signs for a reason, and I sold my house, and the people thought it was a town road too, and it has a private road sign on it, and the realtors aren't letting these people know that, and, but, but at the same time, because the realtors aren't doing their job, we can't just go in and do that.
Okay.
But we're here to help.
All right, well, thanks.
Okay.
Glad you're coming.
Any other public comment?
Reason?
Should be well, I put eyes in. Want to read you something, which definitely pertains to the town, under Title 38, Subsection 2606, prohibited appointments. No municipal officer during the term for which that officer was elected, and for one year thereafter, may be appointed to a civil office or, excuse, civil office of profit or employment position of the municipality which was created or the compensation of which was increased by the action of the municipal officers during the officer's term. Reason I bring this up is we had a resignation by the, or not a resignation, well, actually, yeah, we did, we had a resignation by a selectman, and we had the superintendent wanted to step down from his position. I have no problem with a particular individual who we all think is a great choice for the job, however, it definitely fits...
Good call, Joyce.
I didn't see it.
No, it's okay.
I definitely, I'm not a legal person, I'm not a lawyer, but if you read that, it definitely fits the situation.
So...
So, what I'm saying is, I think you need to get a legal opinion on this particular...
Which we will.
Hire.
Okay.
That's all.
So, your complaint is that...
I'm not complaining, David, I'm simply pointing out a state statute which might be bi-legal.
So, I, I understand that, and before we did that, we obviously looked into it, but, so your concern, your concern is that we hired the selectman to a job for the town of Acton before he did his resignation?
No, 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 no.
No, saying here that we can't hire an officer of the town, or even if he steps down, there's a year wait, is that what you're...
I'm not saying it's...
No, that's what you just read, that's all.
I didn't write that, the state wrote it.
Which was created, or the compensation of which was...
So, we'll put it on next week's agenda?
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, because, you know, we definitely don't want to be in violation of the state's statute.
Absolutely.
Where did you, I'm still trying to find the year. Oh, here we go.
38, it's the title.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Okay, got announcements here, November 15th, Rec Committee, November 17th, Board of Selectmen, November 18th, Planted Board, November 24th, Board of Selectmen.[1788.12]